Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee meeting tonight, Thursday, August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven nineteen P. M. at the Cumberland High School. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Mr. Bacon? Second by Ms. Shea, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Please note for the record that Ms. Feather is absent this evening. Consent agenda, approval of minutes. Regular meeting, seven seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five. Executive session meeting, seven seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five. Enrollment report, August eight twelve, two thousand and twenty-five. Residency truancy report, eight eleven, two thousand and twenty-five. And school bus inspection report, seven sixteen, two thousand and twenty-five, and seven twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Ms. Smith? Second by Ms. Goldstein, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Report out of executive session, uh, meeting. It saddens me to have to begin this report out by addressing a social media post made by a school committee member, Jason Dean, about today's executive session. Overall, the post was inaccurate, misleading, and lacked the level of care which members should approach this role. First, Mr. Dean stated an item related to the litigation titled Ross versus Town of Cumberland et al. was on the agenda. This is entirely false and inaccurate. The agenda did not reflect this litigation, and the committee did not discuss this agenda in executive session. Second, Mr. Dean's post stated information related to a student appeal just this afternoon. Specifically, Mr. Dean alleged, informed... Mr. Dean alleged informed by the parent in question that she believes her son was a target of retaliation after she spoke out against approving the superintendent's requested budget at the town council meeting. This is wholly unsubstantiated and not alleged by the parent in any way on any of the submissions. In fact, a few months ago, in communication response to the parent's email, Mr. Dean used the word retaliation and concluded without any evidence that the parent and her child had been retaliated against. To be sure, the parent did not and has not alleged retaliation. Uh, roles on the committee are to be, are too important not to approach it with care, especially when the committee is discussing or taking action in these matters in executive session. Votes for executive session, yes? I didn't share the email. We can...
Yes, the, the chair just shared the, the contents of a personal email between myself and a constituent in a public meeting without my permission. I don't think that's allowed. I think that, that's, 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 that's an excluded, excluded, uh, category of, of, of Open Meetings Act.
We'll, we'll look into it. We'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Report out of executive session votes. A vote was taken to deny the appeal and uphold the superintendent's decision. That passed six to zero. Votes to seal minutes of executive session, because I could have a motion to seal.
Motion to seal.
Motion by Ms. Smith? Second by Ms. Shea, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes four to two with Mr. Dean and Mr. Bacon in the negative. Personnel reports, Ms. Dreszek?
Hi, good evening. Tonight, I have a list for you, so bear with me. We have five resignations. Rebecca Brown, math at Cumberland High School. Farrah Garnum, paraprofessional at B. F. Norton. Rachel Haraka, paraprofessional at C. H. S. She is resigning to take a position in the C. T. A. this year. Wendy Moran, speech-language pathologist, district. And Alfonso Sepulveda, paraprofessional at McCourt. The first thirteen appointments are all effective on eight twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-five. Eliza Costa, library-media STEM point-five at B. F. Norton. Carissa Gaglion, business at C. H. S. Richard Goodrow, social studies, McCourt, one-year-only. Rachel Haraka, Clipper Block, C. H. S., one-year-only. Amy LaPrad, E. L. A., North Cumberland Middle School, one-year-only. Benjamin McMichael, world-language French, C. H. S. Haley, Haley Michaeljohn, special education, I. Can at McCourt. Jennifer Minahan, speech-language pathologist, one-year-only, district. Lolita Pelizari, chemistry, C. H. S. Courtney Picorillo, special education success at B. F. Norton. Neilia Piscopio, computer science at C. H. S. Nicole Silver, special education preschool. Sarah Young, special education, I. Aim Plus at Community. And the last six are effective eight twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-five. Christine Bertrand, paraprofessional, community. Amanda Esposito, paraprofessional, community. Kimberly Holt, paraprofessional, B. F. Norton. Margaret Herter, paraprofessional, Ashton. Dana Jacoboni, paraprofessional, C. H. S. And Sarah Wanderly, paraprofessional at McCourt. And then I have also submitted coaching appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Mrs. Dreszek, I'm sorry, I have a question. It is mid-August, which is the question of the mid-August every year, and that is, how many open positions do we have right now?
Um, right now, I have two teachers and three paraprofessionals.
And do we have anybody in the pipeline for those?
Yes, uh, all but one. One we're struggling to fill is the STEM one-year-only at the high school.
Thank you. Dr. Thornton, superintendent's report?
Mike, go ahead, take it away. So first, you probably saw today's Valley Breeze, that an article talking about the top ten U. S. metro areas. Cumberland's on the list, which is interesting. It kind of ties into my enrollment conversation, which is next. I know this article just really talks about, uh, you know, housing metrics and why, you know, Cumberland may be, maybe on the list. I'm not gonna assume it's, it's school-related in any way, but I think it may explain why more kids are coming into Cumberland, but I'll let you kind of make that extrapolation. But it is nice to see Cumberland on the list, and I just wanted to share that with you, Mike. As for enrollment, uh, this can change, as you know, uh, anytime, but right now, you can see the past couple of years, we're plus fifty-nine on the books for elementary. That's across all the grade levels, all the buildings, plus-ten, McCourt. Uh, north is neutral, high school plus-two. And you can see preschool's down a little bit, but then down below, you can see in the portal or the queue, we have more coming in. Twelve high school, one elementary, and thirteen preschool. So I would tell you, even though we're plus seventy-one right now, that may not be what opens up on opening day. Some folks will say they're on the books here, but then end up going somewhere else. So we'll have to just wait and see, but it is a good trend. If this did hold up, just think about this. By the end of the year, state aid would go up. If that number is accurate, seventy-one, let's call it a half-million dollars. Your one-point-two-million of fund balance would be down to like seven-hundred that you're using for the budget right now. So it's a nice trend. Let's see if it continues. So we'll keep watching it, but it is more than we expected. And I'll let you all kind of, uh, explain why that is. Probably not one thing, right, in Cumberland, several things, but it, it's nice to see. So I wanted to show you that. So the playgrounds are, uh, in, in, in full swing. This is the ribbon-cutting for Garvin, had it a while back. You can see some of the committee in the bottom right. It was a really warm day, but we had some folks come out. It's our second playground, and that, that was a nice, nice opening for Garvin. Here we have community school. On the left here is the new front door, the new cement we had to pour. On the right, you see some, some areas in the front. What happened was, back in the nineties, we had a drainage problem at Community. It was never really addressed. It flooded and froze quite often, so we couldn't leave it. So we actually dug it up. They put a large, um, underground system there to kind of get all the water away, and we fixed it once and for all. So that's a nice, nice change. And that's just bottom right, the cement angle again, just the new poured concrete in the front. Here, that's the middle entrance to Community. Once again, we had some problems there, so we didn't want to leave it. We had it in the budget, so once again, you can see it on the right, we dug that up and also dealt with that, that issue. You can see that's what it looks like right now today, so that's also a win. That's the middle door of Community facing, um, Sun Valley. Next one. And you can see here, it's really taking shape. Happy to walk with any of you end of next week, if you want to go for a walk. On the le, upper-left is the common area. Uh, the glass came in on the bottom, bottom-left. Bottom-right, that's what the classroom looks like right now, as furniture's coming in. Middle one up top there, that is the art room with furniture coming in. And on the far-right, that's our cafeteria staging all the furniture as it comes in. It's quite, it, it's quite a dance between furniture being staged, Will's team cleaning, and finishing construction, but it's all happening at the same time, so go ahead. Here, once again, Community, we painted the old, um, cabinets, so we got to reclaim those, just painting those. The tech, kind of like here, it's been assembled, and that's the community technology right there. The gym, big complaints years ago, it was too loud, like an echo chamber. You go in there now, you can, all the sound is, is kind of sucked out of the room now. We have the sound panels up top, we have the mats. It's much better. Last thing for the gym, we have a new curtain coming in, probably in October. That's an order. Also, bottom right, that's just a view going down to the bottom area of Community. You also may notice two levels of railings, right? You can see that, our smaller folks, kind of like what you have at the trans, you need smaller railings, so that's why you have two, two rows of railings there. Bathrooms are completed. Our team, even today, is stripping and waxing floors, there they are in the middle. And on the left, we fully painted the hallways, new display cases, so it really looks sharp over at Community. Go ahead. Uh, the elevator folks are in, so we have a new elevator to, um, go only one floor on the far right side of the building, and that's gonna be done, I think, Saturday. So that's, uh, in place. That's the office, that's the cool flooring, the L. V. T. flooring. Bottom, middle, that's the front door, kind of as you walk in, kind of they call it the mantrap. That's what it looks like right now. And upper-right, we are starting to cut the grass, but it's not our first priority, but we are doing it. That's the back of Community, we are, uh, cutting as we go. And the trans building, and you can see, even walking in today, still has some work to do, it will be done on time. Upper-left, we had a trench in the hallway to get the small bathrooms for all of our classrooms. So you had to do that work. Middle picture, they filled it in, as you can see, with the cement. Outside in this building, they re-pointed all of these, um, columns, if you will, all around the trans. That work was done, completed. On the left, first floor, which is now the preschool, we had lockers from the high school from back in the day. Didn't want to leave the lockers, kids bump into those. We took them out, we either sheet-rocked it or made little cubby nooks that the kids can go in, little furniture in there, so that's kind of a nice touch. That's what it looks like over here as we frame it before we sheet-rock it, so that's all underway. And as I mentioned earlier, we added a lower rail for our, our little ones over there on the far right, so that was done yesterday. This is a nice story over here, the upstairs of the, I'll call it the donut, was once a library back in the day in Cumberland, right? You could look down. It had a really ugly look to it, it was a lens on it that was kind of yellow and discolored. We took the lens off. Alborg did a nice job fixing that kind of inside of the lens, and now it's a really sharp skylight for the area. You see now it sheet-rocked. The bottom-middle, that's where we're gonna have like a maker space up there for the high school, and just a, a nice look. We even tried to reclaim some things over here in the middle, that's just wood. We tried to like sand it down to get it back a little bit, to give it a better look. So, uh, that's, it's just a nice, nice look. Once again, Will's team waxing and stripping as we go. So you'll see a lot of rooms with paper on the floor, they wax and complete it, and put paper down to protect it, then it's done, so. Next, the pool. Not since two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, did they really empty it and, you know, regrouse, you know, all that type of stuff, so it's all done. It's surprisingly very deep when it's empty. You go in there, how deep, Tim, eleven feet? Eleven feet deep. So right now, we are trying to refill it. We had a slight snag today with the water in Cumberland sometimes being colorful, so we have to flush the hydrant more, and then we start filling it tomorrow, so that's the goal for that. The lighting, even behind you, it's now L. E. D. in motion-activated. We have to really set these still and make sure they stay on, but the whole high school is mostly done, this area is done. Tim, who else, north? North and McCourt, also L. E. D. So all, it's no cost to district, it's a national grid or without an energy, uh, program, so that's a nice improvement. And McCourt, for a long time, has had a problem with the back door, I'll call it, with a ramp. It's been problematic here, we, we addressed it, took care of that. These are the signs from the court right now, the flooring is in, the cabinetry is in, just gonna flood the ceilings and get the furniture, so it's coming along nicely. And North Cumberland, same idea, just the furniture's coming in, that's the picture of the furniture at North. And Ashton, our last playground, is underway. On the left, that's when they demoed it, on the right, just you see like the, some of the, the posts are in, the footings are all in, so that's gonna be opened, probably a couple of weeks on, I think. Also, with all playgrounds tonight, on your agenda, you'll see a, a P. O. or a, a rec for a fencing, so that's all also in process. The F. Norton's finally underway, they fenced it off, and that's the trailer where the, the team, uh, works, and the first step is doing some just in round, round work around the area. Final perimeter's still coming in, final pricing coming in September, but it's all going according to plan at B. F. And next up, just, um, the flu clinics, it's that time of year, you see clinics on October eighth, the sixteenth, October twenty-eighth, November. The COVID vaccine will be available, I'm, I'm thinking, it, it says, based on availability, but it was available last year, I think we'll have it again this year, so we'll keep advertising that. And also on the website, you'll see each building, we have a sheet where you can have dates, um, of focus for like, say, orientation or, you know, back to school. So I would say, if you want any more detail than the sheet we have posted, you can certainly call your principal to get more details, so that's what I have for that. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Bacon, then Ms. Smith?
My first question is, Community, is it on track to open? It'll be good for opening day?
Absolutely, I would say, this is my fourth one of these. This is the least stressful opening. More stressful at other locations, that is, we are looking really good at Community.
Okay.
It's on budget, and it's, it's looking really good.
Good, uh, second question. The field in the back, I know the C. T. A. is planning on putting the fence up. Are we gonna do anything about the field? Are we gonna take care of the field? I know right now, with half of it's all stone, and, you know, it's, it's hard, you know, especially if a, a student were to fall, or, you know, something to that nature. So was there any plans to?
Actually, walked it today, and we marked off for the fencing. As far as if you wanted to lumen and seed it, we could do it, but it has to be, um, probably, if we do it, I'm not sure if it'd be a spring activity, then we have to have the kids not on the field for that season, so we're happy to look at that. We just don't have a plan right now as far as when we'd want to lumen and seed that.
Okay. And then my last statement is, thank you, um, to, you know, for yourself and Will and the team taking care of cutting the lawns in front of all the schools. I know, I think we all probably got messages, or, I know I got messages about it, so thank you for taking care of that.
Sure. As far as grass cutting, just, you know, we do, we are aware, the grass has to be cut. Our focus is to finish all the buildings, get them ready, and cut everything as it gets closer to the opening, also weeding all the areas too that need weeding, so we are acutely aware of making sure all eight locations look sharp before we open.
Ms. Smith?
Dr. Thornton, the backpack event on June, uh, August twenty-third at Garvin is for the entire district, that's correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Dr. Thornton?
Thank you.
Thank you. Reports of standing committees, fiscal management subcommittee, Ms. Smith?
Yes, the fiscal subcommittee did meet early tonight. We do have a slew of resolutions to go through, and we have payment of the bills as well. And to reiterate, uh, what, um, Dr. Thornton had just said as well, the, the facilities have been very busy. We have construction going on at almost every single school. The teams have been broken out to do painting, cleaning floors, getting furniture, moving community school from the transition back down to their own school, building furniture, things of those natures. And, um, yeah, they are keenly aware that there's concerns in the town that the properties and the lawns haven't been up-kept yet, and they are going back into the grounds now, but they did put the priority with all of the eight construction projects that are occurring.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Policy and Procedure Subcommittee update, Ms. Goldstein?
Hi, um, Carrie, Mrs. Feather is not here tonight, so I am, uh, reporting out for her. We, Policy and Procedure Subcommittee met on July twenty-ninth. Um, we reviewed, um, an amended district wellness policy and all the handbooks for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, that we'll talk about them, um, later on in the night. And our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for August twenty-sixth.
Thank you very much. Achievement and Communications Subcommittee update. We did meet, we discussed the block schedule for high school students, the possibility, and different types and ideas of block schedules, as well as a discussion of C. T. E. programs, career and tech programs, totaling right now with eight. And the goals for C. T. E., which is developing, some of them include developing C. T. E. programs, entry-level employment opportunities, increased local partnerships, increased post-secondary partnerships, as well as increasing opportunities for workplace skill development. We have not set a new meeting, um, but will do soon. District Health and Wellness Subcommittee, Ms. Shea?
Uh, we haven't met, but we're hoping to meet sometime in September.
Thank you. And then the public hearing, read it, uh, reading of amended policies, H. One District Wellness Policy. Ms. Goldstein?
Thank you. So tonight, we are gonna discuss the amended policy, H. One, the district wellness policy, as well as all of the handbooks, preschool, elementary school, middle school, high school, athletic handbook, and coaches handbook, and I would ask that they be read into the record.
Thank you, Ms. Goldstein. Do we have any public comment on H. One District Wellness Policy or the district handbooks? No public comment? New business? Student A, appeal of detention, discussion only, but only if requested in accordance with R. I. Gen laws forty-two dash forty-six dash five-eight. Nothing to report? Yeah, oh, it doesn't really say. Discussion, discussion and a vote to approve Project Hero survey with Dr. Ho, Hook, Hook? Hawk, sorry. Uh, Brown University Health, um, Dr. Thornton? Ms. Shea?
Um, at the pleasure of the Health and Wellness Subcommittee, um, it was discussed about having Dr. Hawk come here to discuss, um, the Project Hero survey that is a nationally institutes of the, of health-funded study, starting this fall. Uh, he is with the Brown Hospital and also Brown University. The study's conducted with seventh graders, um, of all genders, ages twelve through fourteen. It combines sexual health education with social-emotional learning and emotional regulation skills. Uh, it involves both a survey and tablet program used in the research. Through interactive activities, students learn how to make healthy decisions in real-life sexual health situations. Family and schools, uh, will receive compensation for participating, and if you'd like to speak about it, that'd be great.
Project Strong, which we did a few years ago, and had a great experience, and, um, so I returned to the Health Committee and offered up this opportunity. Uh, this is another project that we are, uh, doing with the National Institutes of Health that is, uh, gonna test, uh, a program that's combining social-emotional learning with sexual health education, uh, as a strategy for reducing risk behaviors among adolescents. We bring all the equipment, uh, and we would propose to use the same recruitment strategy where we come to classrooms in the advisory period, let students know about what we're doing, hand out a flyer, uh, and then they take it home. Parents can scan a Q. R. code, and then we meet individually with any parent who's interested in participating. So we meet individually with anybody who is, uh, interested in the project.
Dr. Thornton?
So parents are opting in?
Opting in, yes.
How many other districts are participating in this?
Uh, Cranston School District is participating.
And it's completely voluntary?
Yep.
Other questions? Oh, sorry, Dr. Thornton?
Sample size you trying to get?
This is really, uh, a rel, for us, a relatively small study of a hundred and twenty students. So between Cranston and Cumberland, we're looking for a hundred and twenty-seventh graders.
And if students take part in this, do they receive anything?
Yes, uh, they are all compensated every time they complete questionnaires for us. So, uh, there's a questionnaire before they do any of our program, and then there's a questionnaire, uh, shortly after they finish the program, and then four months after they start the program. So it's a four-month study overall, and they're compensated three times. And parents are also compensated when they, uh, fill out questionnaires for us.
Ms. Goldstein?
Thank you. So part of research studies, they have risks and benefits that are, um, discussed and talked about with, um, parents and kids. Can you talk a little bit about that for us, please?
Sure. Um, we always, like I said, we meet individually with every parent who's interested in participating to make sure that they understand what the study involves, and they sign the hospital consent form, so all of this research is overseen by the Institutional Review Board at Brown University Health, uh, and so that's the organizing, organizing body that's, uh, kind of maintaining the integrity of the study.
Ms. Goldstein?
I'm not, but sometimes I play one on TV. So, um, the voluntary nature of this ser, this research, um, if a student decides that they don't want to participate any longer, even if they're in the middle of the study, are they able to, um, end their participation?
Of course, yes. Every, every part of research has to be voluntary, and so no one does anything that they don't want to do.
Excellent. Any other questions? Okay. So the pleasure of the committee. Motion by Ms. Shea to approve Project Hero. Second by Ms. Goldstein, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Discussion and a vote to approve meals, school meal prices, Ms. Smith?
Yes, good evening. Several months ago, when we were looking at Chartwell and their contract and approving their contract, uh, they did do a cost analysis for us, and we went through the different costs of the meals for the students in each of the grade levels, uh, elementary, middle, and high school. We did breakfast lunches, uh, and meals there, and then we also looked, there's adult meals that are also served, and we looked through all of that, and Chartwells did provide us with information and feedback to show where we had the lowest cost, uh, in some areas, and others, we were pretty neutral to other, other towns and cities. Uh, one of the things that was glaring, um, was the breakfast pricing. We actually were losing money on our breakfast, uh, in servicing it, and we weren't, you know, we weren't even coming out level with that. So there was a proposal to increase the cost of the breakfast from one dollar to one dollar and fifteen cents, and we did discuss that earlier in fiscal and felt that it was important that we started to build that cost so that we're going closer to more of a break-even than a loss. And we're still in the loss category, but it's not as bad, and it's offset with other things, of course. So we'd like to, um, propose that tonight. It did pass fiscal subcommittee three-zero. In addition to that, the adult meals, the prices have been adjusted, and that was voted on early this evening too. The adult meals, I want to read my notes here, um, we had to do them because they were below the federal reimbursement rate, and that is not permitted, so we had no choice but to increase the adult, uh, costs. So for the adult breakfast, it went from one dollar and fifty cents to one dollar and seventy-five cents. For lunch, it went from four dollars to four dollars and seventy-five cents, which is only a few cents more than the federal level, uh, so it puts us in line and, um, with the federal guidance on that. This also was discussed tonight, and that part did also pass in fiscal subcommittee three-zero for those prices. So I will open it to the committee. I, I would motion to approve the new price listing, but we'll open it to the committee.
Ms. Shea?
I do have a question, not about, um, the prices, but I guess, eh, maybe if there's parents out there that do want to kind of plan ahead, are they able to go ahead and preload money now before the starting of the school? now before the starting of the school year?
Yes, that should be open now to be done.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ms. Smith made a motion to... Second by Mr. Bacon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. That's okay. Discussion or a vote to approve amended policies, H1 district wellness policy. Ms. Goldstein?
Okay, so, Ms. Smith is going to help me if I miss something. So we discussed, again, H1 district wellness policy. First, before I start all that, it was a very large, very long meeting, and I just want to thank everybody that was there. We went through in a lot of detail, all of the, the policy and handbooks. So thank you for that time. But district, H1 district wellness policy, we discussed amendments to that policy that basically included information on the elementary school health education curriculum, and we also added formal policy for field trips involving food for specialized classrooms. There are specialized class programs that, as part of their community experience, they, they go out and sometimes they're at restaurants, so this, and ordering food. So this is part, there was a, an addition to create formal policy to address those particular field trips. And I, that, this policy amendment passed subcommittee three to zero, and I move passage to the rest of the, for the rest of the committee.
Thank you. Ms. Goldstein makes a motion to approve amended policy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Schei. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Discussion and a vote to approve 2025, 2026 district handbooks. Ms. Goldstein?
Back to me. So we had a very lengthy conversation about six handbooks from pre-K all the way to high school, including the athletic and the coaches handbook. In general, all handbooks have amendments related to new and updated information, school committee, staff, phone numbers. The goal for the handbooks was twofold, particularly for the elementary school, I mean, for the middle schools, was to have one handbook for both elementary schools, I mean, I keep calling it elementary schools, middle schools. So for consistency between the two schools. And also, the second piece that was very important to Subcommittee was to, to make them living documents with live access to links to policy. Because when policy is amended throughout the school year, for whatever reason, with live links in the handbook, the handbooks are always up to date with the latest policies. So in terms of additions, general overviews, the preschool center parent handbook, added a piece related to vision and mission statement and values, and then updated arrival and dismissal times because they are moving from the, from community school back to the high school. The elementary schools all already have their own, one handbook for all five elementary schools. That was done last year. And there was some minor clarifying language that was added related to attendance and, and absences. The middle schools, it was the largest undertaking, so thank you to both, administration from both middle schools to bring two handbooks into one. That handbook, that was the biggest challenge. Dr. Thornton's name is spelled correctly in all of those handbooks. And again, it was just some minor clarifying language. And in the high school, again, it, there was minor additions, minor amendments, but it was really creating more of the live policy links and taking out some of the, the words of the policy and just putting in the link. So it will always be live. And the same thing with the, the athletic and the coaches handbook. All of those handbooks passed, were approved three to zero in Policy Subcommittee, and I make a motion to approve them.
Thank you. Ms. Goldstein makes a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 district handbooks, one through six. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
I, I just wanted to, to thank the host of 20 some odd people that sat in that warm room that evening for hours on end going through all of this. Last year, and I know some of the committee members weren't here, last year, an extensive amount of work was done on the policy books to put those links in for the policies and into all the handbooks to make sure it was consistent, and also to take out all the extra wording that was there. At one point, it was taking verbatim from the policy and putting it into the handbook, but when it got changed, it wasn't getting updated. So having these links and going through it was very important to do it. And while I cannot thank everybody enough that was in that room that evening, all the teachers from the elementary, all of the principals and vice principals and staff at the middle schools to put it together, and Mr. Costa and his team here at the high school, and making sure that they were aligning and making sure that all the schools had uniformity in, in how we were managing the handbooks. Thank you all. But I want to recognize a person who wasn't in that room, but who has probably done the most work, and that's Melanie. She is Dr. Thornton's executive assistant. She puts together a lot of our agendas and does a lot of work. I spoke to her even earlier today. She has been fixing font sizes, titles, making sure that the policies, when they're being referenced in each section, are referenced in the right area, and it says, please refer to X. All the little things that go behind making this to make it easier for the families to follow and read, especially when they're going from one grades from elementary to a middle to a high school, the parents are going to have consistency. Melanie did that for us. And I just wanted to point out all the work that she put in, and thank her for everything that she has done for it.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, and I echo. That was wonderful. Nice, nice appreciation. Anyone else have discussion? So I have a motion by Ms. Goldstein, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Discussion and a vote to approve resolutions. Ms. Smith?
Yes, we have 16 resolutions tonight. The first one, I'm going to take separate because this has been on the agenda and has been tabled for several meetings now. That's SCPR 06 2025-68. This is the renewal of the Zern contract. We had been tabling this while requesting information on why the, the cost went from $4,500 to $12,500. Zern did come back to us, and they did give thorough information. They have had no cost increase since 2017, and they had been doing an analysis and felt that they needed to readjust. I think that if they look at the competition out in the market, they're certainly, they were well below anybody else as it was. So while we may not like that it was done at one time, the cost still is a favorable cost to have Zern in place for $12,500 for the year and the amount of students that use this K through five. So that one finally did pass fiscal subcommittee this evening, three to zero, and I want to do that one separate, and I would move passage of that.
Ms. Smith makes a motion to approve SC-PR-06-2025-68. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Schei. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero.
Thank you. And now the next 15 are SCPR 08 2025-95 through SCPR 08 2025-109. All of these were discussed in fiscal subcommittee early this evening, and the fiscal subcommittee did pass them three to zero, so I would move passage.
Ms. Smith makes a motion to pass the resolutions, SC-PR-08-2025-95 through SC-PR-08-2025-109. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dean. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Discussion and a vote to approve payment of bills. Ms. Smith?
Yes, we did have payment of the bills early this evening too, in the amount of $979,619.67. Again, we reviewed those in fiscal subcommittee, and we did make passage of them three to zero, and I would move passage here.
Ms. Smith makes a motion to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $979,619.67. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dean. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Dr. Thornton, do we need to go into exec session?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Bacon?
Second.
Second by Ms. Goldstein. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. We adjourn at 7:58 PM.